I'd like to open the Monday, August 7, 2023 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge of the flag, United States of America, through the Republic of which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its law.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Thank you, and do we have a report on the minutes of our July 17 regular session, work session, and executive session? Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from all three of those meetings, and I found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. The next item on our agenda is status reports, and we have no status reports this evening, so that means we can go straight to our visitors' section. Now, tonight, we're planning on having a public hearing on the municipal electric supply aggregation. If you're here to address that, please hold your comments until we get to that part on the legislation. But if you're here to address council, this would be the time for you to come down, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we welcome you.
Hi, my name is Steve Stanley. I live at 615 Oakwood Avenue. I have lived there for the last 27 years. And many of you may know my spouse, Luann Stanley, who is on the library board, former president of the foundation and the library board itself. I'm here to oppose the adoption of the resolution you have in front of you tonight to authorize NORB to submit an application for federal funding for the proposed roundabout to replace the conventional signal array at Five Points intersection. The design, at least as it's currently been shown to the public, deprives me and all of my neighbors, takes away our left-hand turn access onto Far Hills, and prevents us from going downtown, which I have been doing for 27 years, or crossing over to the University of Dayton. The current design is intended, at least from what I have read and what's been described to me by your consultants, is intended to minimize the right-of-way takes, that the cramming this roundabout into the difficult geometry of that intersection, to minimize those right-of-way takes. And in doing so, it forces Oakwood Avenue to be shifted to the south and deprives us, takes away the full access to the intersection that we currently enjoy. That affects me, that affects all of my neighbors, it will, of course, affect all of the traffic that currently comes from Harmon School and is forced to go that way in an arrangement that you have with the school system, and directs all that traffic out into residential streets, which are not currently planned or capable of handling that much traffic. On your website, you respond to some of those concerns in the question-and-answer session by saying, well, we can just go up to take Dixon to Far Hills. Now, turning left onto Far Hills from Dixon is not a very good solution that anybody here would propose in terms of traffic safety. The alternative of going down Catherine and circling back to the roundabout just takes us north, then to go south, and around, circumvent the roundabout and back north, or to cross over to the east side of Far Hills. Not very good solutions, not ones that are very thoughtful in terms of the residents that you represent, in terms of our convenience and what we have enjoyed for such a long time. I won't try to get into some of the details that you say, at least on your website, that you want to work out with the school district. That doesn't seem to have been done yet, and would oppose this resolution authorizing the submission of the application until all of those types of questions are answered and you can respond to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stanley? I know you have previously communicated-
Yeah, my wife and I sent a letter to the mayor-
Via email.
And we encourage people to continue to do that.
We've extended our comment time period for comments, and we are still, you know, pretty early into the evaluation process, so.
Well, I will say that the evaluation of this radical change is a very significant change in any community, particularly one of this size. And while I know the city's position is that you are still evaluating this alternative, submitting an application at this point, seeking federal funds, particularly if that would become another reason to try and advance on this radical change, is not something that I would consider to be a good idea. So I'd, again, encourage you not to do that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address council? Please, again, come down and state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Joan Cole, and I live at 611 Far Hills, and I'm also talking in behalf against the roundabout. I believe that if you are keeping your comments open until September, it is premature to seek federal funding for a grant to put in the roundabout. To me, once the grant's submitted and you get money, well, we got the grant money, we might as well move on and have the roundabout put in. To me, what should have been done to begin with, a true public forum, not meetings, that just, you never get to hear what other people have to say about it. I've written a letter to the editor, there's been other letters to the editor written against it. I live two-tenths of a mile from the roundabout, and I will never be able to get out of my driveway because I don't have access to get out at Harmon. He mentioned Harmon School, there's a lot of traffic that come out to Far Hills from the Harmon School, won't be able to get out of my driveway, and also, it's going to be an eyesore with flashing lights, which would probably be pretty close to where I live, and I think it takes away from the beauty of Oakwood coming into it. I don't think it's necessary. I was raised in Oakwood, was away for a while, but my parents still lived here, so I was here. I've never once seen an accident at that intersection. So I believe it's premature for you to seek a grant when you don't know what the outcome is as yet, unless you've already decided what the outcome is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And we have one more. Please come down and state your name and address for the record, and we welcome you as well.
I'm Linda Cranfield, I live at 607 Far Hills, and I have this-
All our neighbors?
Yes, we are neighbors, and concerned about the same thing, worried that it's a done deal already, because that's the scuttlebutt in the town, that it's already been decided. And why get funding if it has not been decided? So let's hold that off, hear what everybody has to say, and think about the people that have lived in Oakwood. I've lived here over 70 years, so, you know, take into consideration, we fought to get our beautiful schools not taken down, now we have to fight so we don't have an ugly roundabout by our house. So just think about the people that are, you know, affected by this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I can assure the public that this decision has not been made in terms of, in advance of obtaining funding, so.
Yeah, Bill, I'm just going to stretch that a little farther. No decision has been made. This is a grant that we want to look at because, as the gentleman said, or one of you said, we could get the money and it's a done deal. It's not a done deal if we get the money. What if we get no money? That could change things. We are not just about, you know, safety and beautification, and when we represent our citizens, we also have to be financially solvent, and we have to make sure that the funding is in the proper situation. I would never vote yes or no on this roundabout if I didn't know what the funding was going to be. So that's the only reason we are looking into this grant, and, you know, not sure how it's going to go tonight, but that's my take on it.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, does anyone else wish to address council at this time? All right, well, then that will conclude the visitors' section of our meeting, and I'll go into legislation, and Councilmember Turbin has a resolution regarding municipal electric supply aggregation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a resolution approving the plan and operation and governance for the Miami Valley Communications Council Retail Electric Supply Aggregation Program, for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing the same for the city of Oakwood. This is the second reading of this resolution to join the electric aggregation program recently launched by the Miami Valley Communications Council, which I will refer to as MVCC going forward. With the move to deregulate public utilities in the early 2000s, which was intended to promote competition and lower costs, there had been two ways for utility customers to obtain electric or natural gas supply. The default was to pay the standard choice offer rate, charged by the utility company that delivers electricity and natural gas in this area. And so for us, that would be AES for electricity and CenterPoint for natural gas. The alternative is to sign up for a third-party supplier, which can be done on an individual basis or via a governmental aggregation program. These programs allow cities to negotiate competitive rates with third-party suppliers who provide electricity for natural gas or retail utility customers. In 2003, Oakwood voters authorized the city to participate in utility aggregation if a suitable program came around. Currently, Oakwood does not have its own aggregation program, but is a member of MVCC, which is in the process of developing aggregation programs for both electricity and natural gas. MVCC's electric aggregation program is currently up and running, and the natural gas program is anticipated for 2024. As an MVCC-member community, Oakwood is permitted to join these programs. The advantage of joining MVCC is the larger group size, which gives additional bargaining leverage due to economies of scale. MVCC's program is primarily offered on an opt-out basis, which means that residents participating in the participating communities are automatically enrolled in the program unless they take affirmative steps to opt out. However, communities may also join on an opt-in basis, meaning that no one is enrolled automatically, they must enroll themselves. Oakwood City Council has discussed this extensively in our work sessions, and we believe that the best approach for our city is to join on an opt-in basis. In this way, individual residents will make their own deliberate choice on whether to 1) opt into the MVCC program, 2) stay with the standard choice offer, or 3) choose their own third-party supplier. Now, in order to join the MVCC program, state law requires council to hold two public hearings to approve the plan of operation and governance for the MVCC electric aggregation program. The first public hearing was held on July 17, and the second public hearing and vote on the resolution will be held tonight. And so at this time, I turn it over to Mayor Duncan to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilmember Turbin. As she noted, we're required to hold two public hearings. We held the first one last month, and this one's the second. Before we begin, I'd like to go over our procedure for the hearing, which will follow our usual format. I'll start by asking Law Director Rob Jacks to comment briefly on the MVCC aggregation program. Thereafter, I will open the public hearing portion of the meeting to take public testimony, anyone who wishes to speak in support of the aggregation plan, and then we'll hear from anyone who wishes to speak against it. When the public testimony has concluded, we will close tonight's public hearing, and then we will then deliberate and vote on the resolution. Before opening the public hearing, I'd like to ask the Law Director to swear in any of those who wish to testify tonight. Are there anyone here that would wish to testify on this matter? I see none. Oh, yes, you do. Well, not yet, don't, so, well, if you could stand up, he'll swear you in, and then, yeah, and then when we get to that point, you can testify, okay?
I'll go and swear in if you'd like. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in any testimony before council tonight? All right, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll now, I'll have Mr. Jacks tell us about the aggregation program. Welcome.
I'll be very brief, Your Honor. Councilmember Turbin gave a fairly good summary of where we are in terms of the availability of these programs and how this would work, and I spoke at length about it last month. What I'd like to update you on tonight, a couple things. First of all, last month, we were still waiting for confirmation of the exact rate that would be available to the city through this program. It has now been confirmed that we will get, although Oakwood would be joining on an opt-in basis, we will get the same rate that's been locked in for the opt-out communities, which is 6.57 cents per kilowatt hour for electric supply. You can compare that to the 10.8 cents per kilowatt hour, which is the standard choice offer from AES right now. So the projections are that the savings for the average residential household would be in the neighborhood of $30 per household, more or less, depending on the amount of electricity that's being utilized. This would be a two-year deal. It is intended to go live on October 1 this year, and would extend through December of 2025. At that time, presumably MVCC would shop around, get a new rate, and potentially a new supplier. They would, you know, competitively shop it at that point to carry the program forward into further years. I would, we're still trying to figure out the exact timeline of communication to our residents as to how they join, when they join, what they have to do. That will be coming out in the coming weeks, and first and foremost, would suggest that residents watch our city website for information on that. We're trying, we need to make sure we comply with any legal notification requirements, so we're not 100% sure yet if we'll do mailers, or if it'll just be the website, or how we'll do that. But we will be rolling out information very soon on how people can join, so that they can be on board for that October 1 go-live date. If there are any questions about the program, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise, I'm going to keep it short and sweet tonight.
Any questions for our Law Director?
Rob, if a resident chooses to opt in, are they locked in for, what's it, 24 months?
They're not. They can get back out. If they choose to drop out, they can do that with no early termination penalty-
Perfect.
-which is a little unusual with some of these. A lot of the ones, if you go to the state's Apples-to-Apples website, many of them have early termination fees built in. This one does not. So there would be no penalty to get out early. And someone may want to do that if they find that rates fluctuate, or there's a better offer that they want to do on their own with a different third-party supplier, they may choose to do that.
Okay, and so our concept is, if you want to opt in and save about $30 a year, or a month-
A month.
$30 a month, excuse me, then you can do that once we get everything lined up, and then you can stop at any time with no penalty, and then two years later, when MVCC renegotiates, if they're going to give us, you know, $50 a month, we could stay in, or if they're going to give us $10 a month, we can get out.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
One question, how long is the current standard offer in place? Do you know that?
You know, I don't know that.
So that $30 a month is a calculation based on the current standard offer from AES, so, you know, folks have to keep in mind, and we'll figure this out before we do the publicizing of this, but we'll have to figure out when that number changes.
Well, I do know that when they went to the 10.8 cents, that was last year, around June when it went down, and there's a whole process through the Public Utilities Commission where they had to go to get their rate adjusted, and at that time, it went from, I think, 4.8 to 10.8, so it was a pretty significant jump. Presumably, if they wanted to change that now, there would be an additional PUCO process that they'd have to go through to do that. I don't know all the ins and outs of the timing of that, but-
Because even the third, if you're with a third party, they're all different dates. I mean, I know my electric, I'm with the same carrier, my electric's different than my gas, so you have to just go in and research it yourself. Now, Rob, if we have citizens who want to opt in, but they're having trouble, are we going to have any support for them to help them out to do this? It's all online, I assume?
I believe so, but we're still waiting for that information. We'll have some sort of support available, whether that's directly, you know, someone here at the city that's able to speak with him, or whether that's referring him to MVCC, or whether we have some assistance through Palmer Energy, which is the consultant that MVCC is using to help put this program together. One way or the other, we'll figure out how to get people the information.
Phone number somewhere, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I mean, I understand, we need to go through this process of two public hearings, and then agree that we want to join MVCC as an opt-in community before we can get to a lot of these details.
Exactly, yes.
All right, any other questions for our Law Director? All right, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
So I will now, I won't ask you if you're in favor or support, we'll just have you come on up and tell us what we need to hear.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
I'm very excited about it, and I've talked to the Law Director several times about it on my own, because I've been researching in the paper, and I'm very excited that Oakwood's getting involved with that, because going to the apples-to-apples is daunting, because you have to look, like somebody mentioned, you can get penalized when you switch out and stuff like that. So I'm very excited about it. Really isn't a testimony, but thank you. I appreciate the effort the city has done towards making that happen.
All right, well, thank you for your comments. I don't think anyone else wants to testify on this either for or against, okay. So at that point then, I will now close our second public hearing and open it to council for deliberations on what we have all heard over the last two months. Any questions, comments? All right, the only thing I can say is, as an accountant, I've kept track of how much I've paid every month for utilities for the last 23 years. Now, I don't keep track of it the way they're doing in terms of, you know, I just get my electric utility bill and I divide it by the number of kilowatts, and all I can tell you is mine's gone up about 60% over the last two years. So it will behoove people to maybe look at opting. I know I'm not going to save 60%, and I might be happy saving $30 a month, though, so, and I don't use a lot of electricity, you know, I just watch TV and read a book. So, any other comments? All right, well, then I would ask Councilmember Turbin if she'd like to make a motion.
I would, thank you. I move the council adopt this resolution tonight.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions for Councilmember Turbin? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
All right, and then next, we have a resolution regarding a grant application to ODOT. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. A resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to submit an application for Ohio Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is HSIP, grant funding in connection with a proposed roundabout project at the Five Points intersection, and to provide such related information as may be necessary to evaluate the same. Last year, the city commissioned a traffic signal study with the primary purpose of developing a long-range plan for major capital improvements to Oakwood's traffic signal system, as much of the system will reach the end of its useful life over the next five to 10 years. Over the past few months, the study focused on the Far Hills Avenue, State Route 48, Oakwood Avenue, and Thruston Boulevard intersection, often referred to as Five Points. The Five Points intersection is the most complex traffic intersection in Oakwood, and its design is central to the safe and efficient movement of traffic through the city. It also has pedestrian traffic at certain times, which requires the safest possible intersection design. Between April and July of this year, the city communicated with the Oakwood citizens and the general public on multiple occasions via mailings, press releases, public meetings, open-house events, and website postings, to share information about the traffic signal study and the study of the Five Points intersection, including the possible conversion of that intersection from a traditional traffic signal to a roundabout. Included with the communications was information about the possibility of obtaining state and/or federal grant money to pay for the majority of the cost to build a roundabout in the event that the city council votes to proceed with the project. The two major considerations on whether to build the roundabout are the impact on public safety and the project costs. We believe that the traffic engineering shows that a roundabout at Five Points will enhance the safety of the intersection for all users, including vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists. What we do not know is how the construction of a roundabout would impact our city budget. Submitting the grant application will answer that question. And I'd also like to reiterate for clarification, this is a resolution to only request potential funding, this is not a resolution to move forward with the roundabout. I move the council adopt this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Stevens? I know that hearing Mr. Stanley's testimony tonight, that the three largest concerns that I have heard, well, first of all, I've heard of, in the last 20 years I've been on council, I've received more positive comments about the roundabout than any other project we've ever done. It's gone in a range from, it's the greatest idea since the invention of the iPhone, which sounds a little bit out there, to a big giant NO on the comment sheet. So obviously, we have a wide range of opinion in the town, and we are still gathering comments to decide, but the three main comments that I think are issues that we still need to address besides the cost are the north access on Oakwood Avenue, the pedestrian safety crossing between, for the children primarily in the AM and the PM coming back from school, because outside those two areas, there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic, there is some. And then the third one is going from two lanes to one lane going northbound in the second leg of the roundabout. And we are still studying those with our traffic engineers and the consultants, and the reason we need to do this application tonight is the grant funding period ends at the end of August, and so we won't know for at least, I want to say, three or four months, maybe six. Four is what the ODOT's telling us, but they still haven't issued the awards for the April grants, which is sitting in Governor DeWine's office, waiting for a good political time for Governor DeWine to announce, you know, shoveling out money. So we're just trying to get into the queue, and once we find out if we get money, that we may still change the design, but, you know, we may not, and we may also decide they're not going to give us enough money that it's cost prohibitive. So we still have a long ways to go on this, but we have received, the comments have not all been negative. I've received quite a few positive comments, and people are still sending them in, both pro and con, and we're reading every one of them. Every Friday, NORB sends a list to every one of council, that everybody that writes in, and some of you know my email, so I get it directly before the Friday. So that was the only other thing I had. Anybody else have anything for Councilmember Stevens? All right, so at this point then, Lori, I would ask you to call the roll.
Mayor Duncan?
Yes, I will vote yes on this.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our next item of legislation is a resolution to approve extended operating hours for Insomnia Cookies, and Vice Mayor Byington has that.
Yes, Your Honor, this, last year, Insomnia Cookies applied for a special use permit to allow late night hours beyond what is normally allowed in the neighborhood business zoning district. After hearings before the Planning Commission and council, we approved extended hours as follows. For their retail operations, they may be open until 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and to 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. And for their delivery operations, they were approved until 2:00 a.m. seven days a week. At the time, council was concerned about the potential for noise and other late-night disturbances, but Insomnia Cookies was new to the neighborhood, and our concerns were speculative. For that reason, we granted a conditional approval of the special use permit on a 12-month trial basis, and agreed to reevaluate that situation in August of 2023, which brings us to the present. I am pleased to report that after a year of operations, city staff has received zero complaints about the extended hours at Insomnia Cookies. They appear to be making an effort to be a good neighbor, and they happen to sell excellent cookies. The resolution I'm introducing will eliminate the conditional trial basis, part of their special use permit, and convert it to a regular permit. I move that council adopt this resolution this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Byington? I ask him, they sell ice cream as well.
They do.
Okay. I-
I got hungry all of a sudden.
Yes, I know. Hearing no other comments for Vice Mayor Byington, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation this evening. We do have an Oakwood moment, and Councilmember Hilton would like to present that.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. So in the spirit of sustainability, Vice Mayor Byington did an Oakwood Moment last month on all the different things the city does to help the environment. I would just want to remind people about the option of using the bus as a transportation alternate. This photo right here, you've probably seen some around, maybe not necessarily Oakwood's, but this is called a RAP. These are really new. We rolled it out at the, that day in May parade. And so Lori Staisel is really good about the website and what she has on it, and the wise thing she does is just give a link to the RTA's website, because they do change the routes, but currently, there are three routes available, one along Schreier, two Oakwood people, one up and down Far Hills, and one just hitting a little bit of West Shance. And oh, the places you'll go, we all read Dr. Seuss, but it, really through the system, you can get all the way down to Austin Landing, you can get to the Greyhound bus station or the Trotwood High School, the Green, Kettering Rec, and other destinations. There's also something called the UD Flyer, and it runs basically the loop from UD downtown, and of course, has a stop for the arcade, and that's free, and that's, that runs every 10 minutes. The RTA does fun things like gives free rides on Election Day and Rosa Parks, Rosa Parks Day, and of course, certain holidays. And as I said, yeah, free rides, just all sorts of things, you know, getting your vaccine or Election Day. Now, I've used some of these, so all of the buses now have bicycle racks. It used to be just some subset, and there's a really cool app you can use to, it doesn't just have the schedule, but basically where the bus is, you know, what stop it is going past, and, you know, each, each bus stop, you'll see along Far Hills has a number, so you can just type in the number and say, you know, when's it coming, and then it'll remind you how many more minutes you have. So that's a really, really handy thing. And that's all.
All right, thank you. And I was the first rider of the Oakwood RAP bus that day in May, so.
You were.
I think we went all about 25 feet, so, okay. Next on our agenda is our city manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just pick up where I left off at our last meeting, which is a quick construction update. As I said last time, one need only drive down Far Hills Avenue to see that there's a lot going on in Oakwood. The storm sewer project is a bit delayed, and it's 100% a supply chain problem, obtaining the, what you now see out on Far Hills, the large storm sewer pipe, why the delivery of that was four to six weeks later than originally anticipated. So we were hoping at this point to be at least a month into laying the new pipe, but we're not, but it is now beginning in earnest, and we thank the schools for working with us. There's a new pipe going to be put in in the first block of Dellwood, and we've been in close contact with the school officials on that. And there's also a pipe, as you know, running from Dellwood directly north between a couple residential properties to pick up a catch basin in the parking lot that serves the high school, where the teachers park in. And that work will be done before school starts next week. So it's really, you're going to start seeing a lot of construction activity on that storm sewer project. The traffic, or the maintenance of traffic on Far Hills will be a little bit tricky during this project. We'll be beginning, again, putting the pipe in on Dellwood, and then on the two eastern northbound legs of Far Hills Avenue, and during that period, why we'll be running one lane of northbound onto one of the southbound lanes. So the traffic will be routed over, you know, in a lane that was traditionally a southbound lane. And then when we flip and do the other side, while we'll flip and have the traffic do the opposite. And then we'll have to run a large pipe through the easement, as you're aware, to Deveraux, and then down to the outlet near Elizabeth Gardens. And then the final phase of the project will be a section on Four Boulevard between Shance and Far Hills Avenue. So that'll be a couple of months down the road, but again, we expect a lot of construction to start taking place on that. Thank you to all of our citizens that live on streets that we recently resurfaced. Last Friday was the final day of that annual asphalt program, and they waited till last Thursday to do the most notable, which was the repaving of East Shance Avenue from Lookout all the way to Far Hills Avenue. That's now asphalt. A lot of that was concrete. It's a much smoother ride, and we're really happy about that work. Lots of concrete work taking place in front of Harmon School. It will be done this week, a few days before school starts, and again, thanks to the school officials, we've been talking to them about needing to complete that, mostly it's sidewalk repair works, and handicap ramps being put in, and a little bit of work for the schools themselves in driveway aprons. And then when that work is done, the concrete contractor will go to the southwest corner of Oakwood, and will work there for a month, six weeks, and replace a sidewalk, a little bit of roadway curbing, and a few driveway aprons. And then following that, that same contractor will come out onto Far Hills and begin replacing a lot of the roadway curbing and the stormwater inlet tops. And this is work that's being done, as I mentioned before, in advance of the complete resurfacing of Far Hills that is scheduled for next summer. So I'll be happy a year from now to report that Far Hills is completely rebuilt, resurfaced, and all the infrastructure is good for another 10 or 15 years. That'd be my hope. That's all I have tonight.
I don't want to jinx you, but I seem to recall, was it seven years ago we did Far Hills repaving through ODOT?
No, it was longer.
Longer than that?
I think it was 2011.
Okay. And what, 60 days later, we had a water main break?
Well, that happens.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
I used to lose sleep over that, Your Honor, but I've come to peace with the fact that that kind of stuff happens.
1908.
1908. The vice mayor himself got to experience a water main break yesterday on West Shance Avenue.
Oh, gee whiz. How about that?
Asphalt made it over a year, though.
Okay. Any questions or comments for our city manager? At that point then, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Turbin?
No comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to remind people about the Ice Cream Social, which is this coming Sunday at Shafer Park. The games start at 3:30. Ice cream is served after 4 o'clock, and dinner is served from 4:30 to 6:30, and it's always a good time. I think you can already purchase your dinner tickets now at the Oakwood Community Center or the day of, so just wanted to remind people.
All right, thank you. And I think we'll have some members of city council scooping ice cream and selling chicken dinners. All right. Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, real quick, with schools starting in a little over a week, I just wanted to remind everyone to please be patient. The streets, especially around the schools, will be changing a little bit, and the fact that school zones will be activated, and there'll be some no-turn sections, especially around Harmon and Smith. And I always try to encourage everyone to get their children to walk to school. I know that's easier said than done. I completely failed at that with my two teenagers, but I always try to encourage everyone to get their children to walk to school for many, many positive reasons. But if you need to take them for whatever reason, just please be safe and be patient because everyone's trying to deliver their child to school that day, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, I'll just do my annual reminder that tomorrow is Election Day. I encourage everyone, I think the polls open at 6:30 a.m. tomorrow and go through 7:30 p.m. This is a special election, there's only one issue on the ballot, issue one, and I just encourage folks to do their homework, read what is actually in the issue, don't depend on just the catchy little slogans that both sides have thrown out there. The whole point of democracy is that we take it seriously enough to do our homework and vote on something that we believe is important to us. So tomorrow, 6:30 to 7:30.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Byington. I have no comments this evening. Our next regular session is scheduled for Monday, September 18, 2023. We are adjourned.